I'd like to call the order. The Norwood City School District Board of Education Committee meeting for October 12th, 2021. Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Ballard is absent. Mrs. Cole?
Present.
Mrs. Raper?
Present.
Mrs. Rarica is present.
Present.
Virtually.
Oh, Mrs. Ballard's walking in right now.
Oh, good.
It's all right. We just called roll, so you didn't miss anything. Next item on our agenda is the adoption of tonight's agenda. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt tonight's agenda as written.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Raper?
Yes.
And now, Section 4 in our agenda is presentations. With us tonight is our high school principal, Mrs. Akers. Mrs. Akers, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So first, I wanted to start by thanking everyone for allowing us this opportunity to speak not only to the public but to the board. And we're very proud, and I'm always excited for this night because it's a chance I get to speak about something I'm passionate about, which is the high school building. So, Norwood High School, for this year, we're going to start this evening by recognizing one of our students. So Jacob Canada has joined us. He'd like to come up and kind of stand here in front. I'm going to put you on the spot. It is my honor to recognize senior Jacob Canada this evening for his outstanding achievement on the PSAT qualifying test in the National Merit Scholarship Program competition. Jacob has earned a letter of commendation. This recognition is quite an honor. Each year, approximately 1.5 million high school students from across the country participate in the PSAT test. The PSAT measures reading, writing, language, and math scores. The criteria for being recognized by this prestigious program is high and has very rigorous standards. Only 50,000 students earn a commendation, and Jake is among the prestigious few. Beyond his obvious academic achievements at Norwood High School, Jake is also a member of the track and academic teams. He also participates in the Norwood High School Orchestra, playing the viola.
Violin.
Sorry, I missed that. But he is currently exploring his post-secondary plans and is considering computer science or astrophysics as his field of study. So we are very proud of you, Jake. We'd like to say congratulations, and we have a little presentation from our board president, Mr. Atwood.
Here is the letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program. It's very well served.
Would you guys pose for a photo?
Yes.
I'd have to get some pictures.
Congratulations.
Okay, ready? Two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
So Jake is a fine example of exactly what Norwood High School has to offer and the accomplishments that students can achieve by coming to Norwood High School.
Oh, Tina, do you mind if I pop in here right now?
Sure.
Since we got another recognition. This is from Senator Rob Portman. He said, "Congratulations to Norwood High School on receiving the American College Application Campaign School of Excellence Award from ACT and Ohio's Three to Get Ready Campaign." He goes on to say, "This honor is really notable this past school year just because the applications to college has decreased nationwide, but it did not decrease here at Norwood. So thank you all for your great work, and congratulations to the entire Norwood High School community on this well-deserved recognition." Senator Rob Portman. So congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Wow, you know, so now we started off on a great note.
Tell the ladies that gear up.
Oh, yes, yes.
That's a good portion of their efforts right there.
I'm going to get to them. They're in this thing. So I wanted to start off with our mission statement for Norwood High School. Norwood High School is dedicated to providing educational opportunities in a supporting and inclusive environment, and that will empower all students to achieve their intellectual, social, and personal growth potential, and to become responsible, productive, and contributing We are Norwood. So here is just some statistics for folks. We have currently about 454 students in the building and 43 students attending the Great Oaks campuses. We have 29 certified staff members and seven intervention specialists. Three specialized classrooms, two counselors, a full-time mental health specialist with our Talbert House partnership, a social worker, a school psychologist, specialized services available that includes speech and language pathologist, occupational therapist, a physical therapist. We have onsite health aides with access to the community-based health center. We have access to athletic training through an athletic trainer through our partnership with Tri-Help, seven educational aids to support student learning, three gear-up support staff members that assist with college, career, and those type planning services, and partnerships with Avenues for Success, Drake Planetarium, and the Norwood Community Television. That's just a brief amount. There are tons of folks involved in Norwood High School and the Norwood City School District. We could not be as successful as we are without all those partnerships. So where are we going? Well, one thing is we're very proud of our building plan that we're preparing students for success. This is just the tip of the iceberg, so I wanted to be brief. But we have career exploration, graduation pathways that are determined early in the student's educational experience at Norwood High School. We are trying to get ACT remediation-free scores. How we're doing that, through our ACT prep course expansion and assessment creation utilizing edelastic ACT release questions. Of course, we always look for students to earn an honors diploma and the diploma seals towards graduation. This is design pathways for student course selections that we begin in the ninth grade year. We also have industry-recognized credentials. We, this year, have a new course. It is called Prepared for Success. That is in place. Success Academy and our Work Credit Program, which also has NIMS and what is called Rise Up. Those are industry credentialing programs. And we have a great partnership with Scarlet Oaks. Currently, with my contacts, we have two, maybe three, credentialing programs that are going to be offered to our work-study students so that they can go to the Oaks, get a career credential, and still attend the high school here as well. So it's a work in progress, and I'm very excited about it. Of course, AP participation. We have developed new AP courses, AP offerings that are also now multi-grade level, nine through 12. And of course, our CCP or dual enrollment courses. So we are moving in a direction forward, trying to provide opportunities for all. Currently, we have 11 advanced placement course options for students, grade nine to 12. We have in-house and off-site CCP opportunities for students. 25 of our 41 students in the Success Academy have found employment opportunities with various local businesses that provides flexible scheduling, earning credits in a non-traditional setting, and the potential for industry credentialing. And the groundwork is still developing for our apprenticeship program. We have opportunities in instrumental music, vocal music, visual arts, theater, and athletics. We also have opportunities for clubs through Avenues for Success. We have student groups such as Student Council, National Honor Society, Ignite Mentors, and the Hope Squad. Specialized course offerings to meet the needs of all students. For example, interactive music, physical education opportunities for exceptional learners, and biology connections. So that is just a brief summary of all the wonderful things that are happening at Norwood High School. You can see that things are returning to what we would like to say is a normal school year. The district has provided us with a lot of safety measures to keep our students in school. So you can see that we do have all these things happening at Norwood High School. All right. Well, thank you so much for your time. Is there any questions?
Thanks for using a picture of the balloon arch.
That's right. Thank you for helping us with that because it was a bit, as you can see, it worked. Yes. All right. Thank you so much for your time. Do you want me to scroll back to the main screen?
Yeah, that'd be good. That's a good background. Thanks, Tina.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda for discussion is the Education Committee, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Board Member, Mrs. Raper.
All right. Item 5.01 is the change in the dress code, which we spoke about at our meeting last month. So the verbiage will change. What it currently had stated was, "All students must wear a shirt with sleeves that cover the shoulders. No strapless, backless, sleeveless shirts, halter tops, or crop tops may be worn." And that will just, will erase that first line that says, "All students must wear a shirt with sleeves that covers the shoulders." So still, no strapless, backless, halter tops, or tops with spaghetti straps, and no muscle shirts. So, does anybody want to discuss that at all?
No, I think that's fine. While we have the handbook open, is there anything else in there that needs to be tweaked or amended? Has anybody seen anything else?
I'd like to take a moment to go through it and review. This year has been obviously tough on us to be able to focus on that portion of it, and we may just need to just do a fine-tooth comb review for language like that because in a couple of the books it was modified and a couple it hadn't been. So it was, there was just an inconsistency that I think was just a, it was just one of those things that just got overlooked on accident. So I would like to take a look through it, if we can do that, maybe later this year.
Oh, certainly.
Maybe a special meeting, or not a special meeting, but like, you know, the committee members could sit down and just, just double-check the language and make sure it's consistent with all the elementarys and middle school and high school for, for just those little things that we don't often think about needing to double-check, you know?
All right. I think that's a great idea. I think we'll go ahead and make sure we do that. Typically, we adopt the handbooks in the spring for the following year. So we'll just have to make sure that it's something that we make sure is on the Education Committee's agenda early, so January, February-ish.
Yeah.
And I think it'll be a good time for that. Any other discussion on that? No, we'll move on.
All right. 5.02 is the LPDC, which is our Professional Development Committee. It's just meeting dates for that committee throughout from now until May. Does anybody have any discussion about that?
So just so people see acronyms and are kind of wondering, you know, exactly what this is, this is the Professional Development Committee specifically for licensure.
That's correct. For all the teachers go through that committee, and they present their individual plans that they work on over a period of time and get approval from that committee of our colleagues.
Okay. All right. Any discussion on that? No? We'll move on to item number six in our agenda. That's personnel, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Superintendent Ronan.
Oh, thank you, President Atwood. Number one under employment is supplemental contracts for the school year, and these are the contracts for our teachers. And as you see, a lot of it revolves around technology specialist, student store, that kind of thing. Number two is a stipend for Mr. Stacy for additional duties. Number three, item number three, Avenues for Success. These are all the club advisors for the after-school programming for avenues. Now, number four are the athletic supplemental contracts for this coming year, wrestling, bowling, in our academic team. Number five is, that's our coaches, our pupil activity contracts, as we are moving into our winter sports. So there's a large list of winter sports activities, hiring our coaches. Number six is Avenues for Success again. These are our site coordinators for the after-school programming at the various schools. And then number seven, supplemental contracts for the, this has to do with the theater program. And number eight is a stipend for Mr. Stacy because he was left off the original list. So we have added him tonight. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Any discussion on the employment recommendations for this month? So I'm just going to let the group know that next week I will be abstaining from this vote.
I do think it's amazing that we have so many partnerships that are willing, from our teacher's side, to step up in becoming advisors for our students so that we have all these opportunities. It's kind of nice to have a whole entire page of just names after names.
Exactly. It's a huge list.
Two, sorry, two pages. Two pages of names of people willing to step up. That's really cool.
Any other discussion? No, we'll move on to Section 7 in our agenda, and that's the Policy Committee. And I'd like to turn it over to Board Member, Mrs. Rarica. The floor is yours.
Well, we have a lot of policies to look at, and Christine and Jackson, they'll tell you all of them.
Hey, thank you. We do have a number of policies. The first policy listed is ACAA. This is our sexual harassment policy. It outlines procedures, the revision does, outlines procedures and gives more details for the discrimination or harassment procedures. So it's an existing policy that we're simply updating.
Is this in regards to student or to staff?
This is in regards to staff members.
Okay. Thank you.
As it relates to all parts of their work, though.
Okay.
ACAA-R is the regulation, so this is part of the grievance process. So this revision provides for some opportunities for the district to decide if there needs to be some temporary supportive measures in place for the employee. So you'll see that that's listed in this new policy, and it's at the discretion of the district to determine what the supportive measures might be for an employee as appropriate. The next policy is DJF-R, which is a purchasing procedure policy, regulation rather, and Julie helped, Julie Camp House, our treasurer, helped us with this one. This came out of a need around the state of Ohio based on some of the audits they did with food service. So because of that, they thought that they needed to outline more clearly the procedures that would take place for purchasing to support districts in how they make purchases. And Julie reviewed this as well and found it to be something that we could and should embrace as well. The next policy, IKF. It's a policy that you see every six months, I believe. It's our graduation requirement. This time, the new focus of the graduation requirement is exactly what Mrs. Akers had spoken about, the seals. So they're talking about the seals, the graduation seals that students can earn and should earn, and that locally we have some seals in place for our students to earn as a part of it. It also has some language in here for students who transfer, especially those students who transfer their senior year, and how we accept their courses that they've already accomplished, and how we support them as they make their way through their final year. We use, just as a FYI, we use the community service seal, the fine and performing arts seal, and the student engagement seals as our local seals. There are additional seals that the state has already supported. Those are like those, and those will always be in existence for every school district. But each school district was charged to choose some additional seals that locally you would approve and help your students work towards. The next policy is DH. This is another policy that our treasurer, Mrs. Camp House, helped to finally tweak for our needs. It allows for the treasurer to consider a bond or liability insurance and to choose what's best for the district at that time. So Mrs. Camp House was able to look through the OSBA model and make sure it met our current needs and feels good about that work moving forward. The next policy is the DECA policy, which is the administration of federal grant funds. This policy is about providing clarification for districts and about the businesses to, that we should support when using federal programs, or federal funds, rather. So they are asking districts to take some affirmative steps towards choosing qualified small and minority businesses, and also women's businesses, enterprises. That's among some of their recommendations as we move forward and among some of the procedures moving forward. And that's for the use of our federal funds. The next policy is the Student Transportation Services, EEA. So this policy has, it's very similar to our previous policy, but embedded in the ORC code, it houses all of those changes that are in place. It says the same thing we've always said, which is, "We provide transportation unless it's impractical for our community schools, STEM schools, STEAM schools, and private schools." And this time, they've woven it in, so it just says, "In accordance with state law." But that is exactly what's in the state law, that you can provide transportation unless the district deems it impractical.
And I think the payment has gone up this year. They've increased it.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mrs. Ronan. The next policy is GBK, and this is the tobacco, the no tobacco use on district property by staff members. And this policy, we've talked about this policy a lot, most recently in the last year, I think, and even two years. And we've, what they've done, at different times, they've referred to different products that people might consider tobacco products. So they've cleaned that up a bit, and they include all electronic smoking and vapor products, all in one swoop. I know you might remember they referred to them as e-cigarettes in the past, but that didn't encompass everything. So this time, they've tried to encompass everything by just calling them vaping projects and electronic smoking products. So that's that policy. And you'll see that theme carried out in a few other of our policies, which often happens when we do a review. The next policy is GBQ, and this is the Criminal Records Check Policy. It impacts hiring processes after October 9th, so just a few days ago. It is in effect with state, in terms of state law, and it asks for the districts, it shares that the district can require additional background checks for any applicant for employment and also a prospective volunteer. So that's what this policy says. It allows for additional background checks if the district determines that that is necessary. The next policy is GCD. This is the professional hiring, professional staff hiring policy. And in this policy, it asks the district to check certain databases on ODE's website before considering an applicant. And then, more importantly, this theme you'll see is well-carryed out, but on every applicant's, on every applicant's application, they have in bold letters, they've asked us to put this in bold letters, that any person who knowingly makes a false statement is guilty of falsification under Section 2921.13 of the Revised Code, which is a misdemeanor in the first degree. So they're really asking us to call out the notion if someone were to consider falsifying their documentation, that is strongly advised against in all aspects and now in our policy. The next policy is GCD, or GDC, GDCA, and GDD. And this is the staff, support staff recruiting, posting of vacancies, and hiring policy. So this policy talks about that the district will follow guidelines, of course, no unlawful discrimination in the hiring process, that every candidate that we consider has an interview and a criminal records check, and that we also check the ODE database for any additional information we might find on that database. So again, just thematically carrying through. It additionally says that same statement about you cannot falsify any of your documentation or it is considered a misdemeanor in the first degree. The next policy is IGAG, and that is our Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco Education Policy. Again, you'll see the changes in the verbiage is to include electronic smoking devices instead of the way they refer to it in the past. So that's just cleaning up that language a bit. The next policy is IGAH, IGAI. This is our Family Life Education and Sex Education Policy. And what this policy says is it asks for our parents moving forward to opt in on the topic of sex education outside of certain parameters. It will be our procedure moving forward with the adoption of this policy that we will ask that all of our parents opt into our conversations in all of our health classes about these sensitive and important topics so that we are in very good communication with our families about the kinds of things that we're talking about in class. A lot of the things required to speak about in class are part of the Revised Code for Ohio, so we are honoring that as well. But we certainly want to make sure our parents are informed about that. The next policy is IGBE. This is the Remedial Instruction Policy. So this is a policy that goes into effect July 1st of 2022. So it's for incoming freshmen next year. It allows for our, at a different timeline for the state, just set the timeline for our families. But particularly in this policy, it focuses on the ACT and the SAT. We're required as a district and as a school certainly to administer the ACT or the SAT. This policy allows for families to opt out if they choose to. It is the ticket to higher education in some aspects, but we will still be required to give it. But families do have an ability to opt out of that, and this policy allows with that change and any timeline moving forward, it allows for those changes to occur as well. The next policy is IGBEA, and this is Reading Skills Assessment and Intervention Policy, the third-grade reading guarantee policy. This changes a timeline date as well, and this really affects not so much third graders but incoming kindergartners, that we give a kindergarten readiness assessment to all of our kindergartners at the beginning of the year, and the timeline before now was from August until November 1st. This switches the timeline and any timelines moving forward. This particular timeline will be July 1st, so you can give a test in the summer months prior to kindergarten up through 20 days of being a kindergartner. So they're trying to move that timeframe for the kindergarten, and my assumption is they just want us to have that data earlier on and to be able to make some decisions about their individual programming. The next policy or regulation, rather, is IGBEA-R. Again, that third-grade reading guarantee highlighting that everything we do will be in accordance with the statutory timelines. The next policy is IICC, and this one focuses on school volunteers. It's that same theme that you saw earlier, was that a district may require additional background checks for any prospective volunteers, and that's part of how we can operate moving forward, not just our typical background checks that we do currently. The next policy is testing programs. So this testing program policy clarified some language on security violations. So you'll see in this policy that there are some more specific things that they consider a violation or an unethical practice. So they've listed that out for our schools, for us to think about as we move forward and to make all of our, all of those who come in contact with any kind of tests that we do aware of these changes. The next policy is- The next policy is the School JEC, School Admissions Policy. So this policy focuses on an interstate compact that Ohio joined, and the focus was for military families. So it allows military families to, if they're moving to a new area, to sign up electronically for that school district. And then once they come to the school district, they have 10-day, they have a 10-day period to establish residency, because as you can imagine, military families need to move and come and go, and so sometimes they aren't established before a school year starts, but they're headed that way. So this compact that Ohio was a part of allows for that relocation guidelines for military families. The next policy is JP. JP is the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Policy. It's called the Restraint and Secclusion Policy, although this policy covers more than just that. This is a policy that OSBA completely rewrote based on new regulations. Mrs. Eschman has looked over this policy as well and is in keeping with the work that we do. But Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, PBIS, is definitely more than just one thing. So it talks about how we work to develop a positive environment for our students and the supports we put in place for students that need additional help with maintaining this positive environment that we, that we would like to have throughout their experience. This policy, you'll see, it's completely different than the past, although thematically not different. It's still good work that we do with students, and we feel that we're in keeping with this policy currently, and nothing in here would cause us any alarm at all. The next policy is KJC, the No Tobacco Use on District Property. Again, this policy deals with smoking and certainly mentions electronic smoking devices and vapor products, just like some of our other policies did. Our next policy is our College Credit Plus policies. There's, there are two of them, and they are exactly the same policy, IGCH-R and LEC-R. And these policies change a couple of things for next year. The first thing it changes is that families will sign to acknowledge that there may be mature topics covered in their CCP course, depending on how far into their CCP their courses go, like how many years they've taken it, that there might be some thematically mature topics. And then secondly, the other change that can be noted is that there is another alternative to remediation free options for students to be eligible to participate. So those two changes will be in effect. So it begins, so it began September 30th, so it's after our initial application process. So we will weave in that letter for families as we, as we go forward through that next application process for CCP courses. And that brings us to the end of our policies for the evening. I appreciate your attention to those 23 policies and our regulations.
So keep in mind that we'll be doing two readings, and it's a lot to dive into. I know a lot of these are just updating the language from Ohio Revised Code. But, you know, there are a couple of them in there that are completely rewritten. So as we kind of look at that this week and through the next month, those are the ones I'd like to kind of focus our attention and our work on to make sure that we're getting the language in there that we want.
I do have a question. I did note already, I know we're going to be going through them, but I've already noted several typos in it, and I assume it's going to be gone through with a fine-tooth comb anyway. But I've already found several just in scrolling. And then I did have a question about language that was not changed. Under the Family Life Education section in IGAH, there's a sentence in the second paragraph, that parents have the primary responsibility to assist their children in developing moral values. I don't like the implication of moral values that links sexuality specifically to morality. Developing sexuality is a perfectly normal thing, and to apply that it is either moral or immoral, it can be a religious preference, it could be, you know, someone's personal preference, of course. But morality shouldn't be the basis of a child's understanding of their sexuality or learning about the medical necessities of how to protect themselves in sexual situations. And of course, it does fall to the parents to build a moral structure for their child and what they feel is considered moral for them. I just don't think that it is the appropriate word choice to imply that the school is establishing morality in relation to sexual behavior.
Okay. That's something that we can certainly look at.
All right, any other discussion on these? I know it's a lot to take in, 23 policies, but we've got plenty of time to dive into those. So even, even if we have the first reading, they're not adopted fully until after the second reading, so even if it's, we just want to go through the process to make sure that we have the timing down, we can still have the first reading while we're tweaking for the second reading. So there's nothing wrong with that. All right, we're going to move on in our agenda to Section 8, which is the Buildings and Grounds Committee Report. And I'd like to turn the floor over to Board Member, Mrs. Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have six requests for facilities this month. The first one is from the Norwood Civil Service Commission. They're looking to use the high school cafeteria for the Account Clerk Civil Service Test, October 27th, from 5:15 to 7:30. The second request is from the Cincinnati Mavericks. They're asking for the pool for water polo practice. This, this form says various dates in September and October. They, they did not use the pool in September, so October, from 4:30 to 6:30. Number three is Seven Hills. They're looking to use the pool for swim practice, Monday through Friday, October 29th until March 15th of '22, from 5:00 p.m. to 6:30 p.m. And then we have a note that said they've done this for years and that it works well. Number four, this is a new one, this is Bigger Than Sneakers. They're asking to use the Field House Sundays, October 17th through May 2022, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So Bigger Than Sneakers is a nonprofit that our A.D., Chuck Richardson, is affiliated with. They'll be making a donation to the basketball program, and Chuck will be maintaining the door, so we won't need any maintenance workers there. Number five, we've done this in the past also, Gemma the Highlands 5K. They'll be using the Sharpsburg parking lot. That's Saturday, November 6th, from 7:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And then lastly, the Inner City Soccer Academy, they're asking for the field at Shea Stadium, November 16th and 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00. And this, as a reminder, is coached by Dan Luken, obviously our, our middle school teacher and soccer coach here, and this program is open to Norwood residents and students.
All right, any discussion on these?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes.
Yeah, Bigger Than Sneakers, they said every Saturday from June 4th and then?
Sunday.
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 Oh, Sunday. I thought it was Saturday. I was like, what are we going to do about Christmas Town?
All right, any other discussion, questions?
These are really awesome community events. $2,000 to our basketball programs, nice, too. That's really cool.
All right, well, no further discussion. We're going to move on in our agenda. Section 9 is the Finance Committee Report, and I'd like to turn the floor over to our Treasurer, Mrs. Camp House.
Thank you, Mr. President. We continue with our plans for refunding the 2017 debt for the bonds used for the renovation project voted in November of 2016. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank our Board of Education for their commitment to the fiscal stability and transparency of this district. Mr. Atwood is President of the Board, has led the board and the District of Fiscal Integrity, and this refunding is just another example of the good things that we can do with fiscal stability. So when we had our Moody's rating, they were very complimentary of the district. And a lot of that is the budgetary control and cash balances that we've maintained, and that's from before me. So it's been the leadership of our board, and it's just a really good thing. When we do things like that, then you can save money for the taxpayers. If you're in fiscal emergency, you don't have cash balances, kind of things, you can't do things to help the taxpayers. On the agenda, 9.01, financial reports for September month in closing, attached for your review and approval next week. 9.02, permanent appropriation resolution. This is our budget for the current year. You will notice that it's changing from temporary to permanent, which is required in October. 9.03, amended official certificate of estimated resources. This document goes to the county auditor and details our expected revenues. The county auditor uses our estimates and appropriation resolution to fulfill their requirement of oversight that we aren't spending more than we bring in. 9.04, then and now purchase orders, there's just a couple for your approval. 9.05, finally, a transfer from the general fund to the food service account, the cafeteria fund. This is our final transfer for the cafeteria fund now that Milford has taken over operations of the cafeteria. And last, for finance, is a Denergy, Dynergy, I guess it was, what it's called, electric agreement effective September 24th. This is a three-year agreement for purchasing electricity. We had the opportunity to purchase electricity at a good rate, and we took advantage of that, including our current two-year contract that we have remaining, we have two years remaining, plus this three-year contract. We now have five years of electric, electricity purchased under contract at less than 5 cents per kilowatt hour. So that is a really great thing to feel locked in. I feel comfortable going into that. Not only is it a good rate, but the rates can't go up, we're locked in, and they can't pass along demand costs to us through these, through this electrical purchasing contract. So I was really happy about this one and glad to bring it to your attention. And that's all I have for finance.
Any questions or discussion about the finance items for this month? So I do have, it's kind of related but not related, so it's related to 9.06, the Dynergy Electric Agreement.
Yes.
So I know we did that because of the timing thing for September 24th, but that kind of made me think about the natural gas. And are we locked in there the same way that we're locked in on the electric side?
Natural gas, we locked in, and that, when I, when I purchased it, I remember thinking, oh, I didn't say natural gas. We purchased it just a couple of months ago, and I was not happy with the rate, but I brought it to you because I couldn't bring it in, I couldn't go into the winter on Duke's rates or on a variable rate. So we are locked in, the rate's not fantastic, but we are locked in for a year, and they are, our, our, the group that helps us is searching for a great rate for us for gas, and then hopefully we can get like a three-year contract.
So the reason why I bring that up is because with the raw material supply shortages that are going on globally, they're anticipating natural gas rates to be like 120% above what they were last winter.
Right.
So whatever you were paying, whatever your gas and electric bill was last year, this winter, it's going to be double.
And I don't think a lot of people know this also, but with the demise of the coal plants, which everybody feels differently about, electricity is now about 40% produced from gas, from natural gas in this part of the state, in this part of the country. So we use a very little bit of gas anymore, natural gas, because we've replaced a lot of our old-fashioned boilers with our new HVAC systems. But I was in a panic about making sure that I had good electric rates for several years, so.
Well, that's, that's, makes me feel better that we're locked in on the natural gas side, because it's going to be a year or two before that whole thing settles down.
Yep. I think the rate, and I'm trying to remember what it was from a couple of months ago, but it was like three times higher than the variable rate at Duke was than what I locked in at. So even in August or July, whenever it was I did it, it was still just incredibly high to variable rate.
All right, any other questions or discussion? No? All right, next item on our agenda, we, I'm going to ask for a, actually, I'll just go ahead and I'll just make a motion that we enter into an executive session. And the motion that I'm making is, I would like for us to enter into executive session in accordance with ORC 121.22G81, which is information directly related to a request for economic development assistance that is to be provided or administered under the statutes set forth in ORC 121.22G81, or involves public infrastructure improvements or the extension of utility services that are directly related to an economic development project. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? Mrs. Camp House, please call the roll.
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mrs. Cole?
Yes.
Mrs. Raiber?
Yes.
With that, we are in executive session. It is 6:46 p.m.
So, um...
Hold on, let's just make sure, yeah, we're black screen. Alice, are you still there?
We're convening, so we need a vote? We don't.
Okay.
No, you did it right.
All right. Good deal. So we do have one more item that we're going to discuss, and we're, we have a guest speaker.
It is Bill Dieters, the lawyer for the district, so I am calling him. Hello, Mary. Hello, Mr. Dieters. I am here with the board.
All right.
And they had requested we talk about, you know, last year, we, during the virtual meetings, we were taking emails and reading them out loud into the public record, and I think there was some discussion about stopping that, and I think the board wanted information about whether that's appropriate going forward. So I have put you on speakerphone.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
I think so. Alice, can you hear? Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to have a hard time hearing you if you have questions. So, Mary, if there's questions, can you like let me know who asked it and then kind of repeat it for me? That'd be awesome. So, yeah, I'm going to first start off by saying, you know, and related to COVID and going back to March of 2020 or whatever, obviously, the one thing that I, the only real thing that I know, and I think, Mary, you've heard me say this before, the only thing I know for sure related to COVID is, is that I know whatever I know today is going to change tomorrow, right? And I think that's a little bit related to this because I think a lot of boards of education struggled when they went to a virtual board meeting, is that they felt like they wanted to make sure that the public had, you know, access to the board and that there was transparency and that people could, could address the board, they needed to address the board, because that was something that most boards of education had, you know, obviously done for, that was their policy in their process. And in some ways, it's kind of ironic because the fact that we started streaming our meetings and allowed public to watch them on the internet, and everybody kind of turned to looking at computers, it was almost sort of counterintuitive that I think we had like better participation for meetings, even though we were in a COVID situation. And I think, like Norwood and, and, and other districts, they did the same thing by allowing people to kind of submit their questions or their comments in emails, or to make comments on, you know, whether it was a Facebook feed live or, or a YouTube feed live during the meeting. And I think during that period of time, I think it was probably appropriate. I just have some concerns about something like that that we continue to do. And so if the question is, you know, is that wise to continue to do that or not wise to continue to do that, ultimately, I only give advice, right? Like I don't, I'm not this, the sixth board member. I don't get to decide things for you, and I certainly don't get to vote, but... But when, it was brought to my attention that that was one of the concerns that some of the board members have is like, this is just a good practice or not moving forward. I have to say that I, I think that it's something that I would probably advise against and I have a couple of reasons why. And I'll kind of go through those and then be happy to answer any questions or talk about it. And I know it's a tough, kind of a tough decision sometimes to make in these perspectives, but I have about five or six points that I kind of want to go over. So if that's okay, I'll go over those. The first one really is I'm, I'm really concerned a little bit about time. It's important at these board meetings that obviously that, you know, the public business gets conducted. Most boards of education during their public comment phase will have some time limit on how long someone can speak. A lot of times it's one minute, two minutes, three minutes, something like that. And sometimes some boards actually have, you know, even though it's a three-minute per person, they'll have a 30-minute total time limit as to public participation. So if you had 150 emails that came in over the course of a month, well, how would you manage the ability to get all those read into the record in, just from a time perspective? So that's just kind of a simple temporal type of issue. Like, is that something that, you know, once you say that this is what we're going to do, then you're committed that you're going to have to do that? And if that begins to become an issue from time, then it can become problematic. Number two is some issues I have concerning confidentiality issues, especially FERPA and other Ohio laws regarding student record laws. When we get those emails, probably most of the time, I would imagine that there's not an opportunity to read those prior to, kind of like preview them, prior to reading them into the record, which puts at risk, I think, the opportunity that we could potentially violate confidentiality rights, especially when it comes to student record issues and student information issues and person identifiable information. So that concerns me a little bit because we don't really have the opportunity to preview them first. The third issue really is an issue that I'm, I'm very concerned about also regarding just public records in general. When we read those into the record, we've created a public record, which means that whatever is said by whatever individual who may or may not say it, and whatever email they send to us, by reading it into the board meeting, we've created a public record because that will then become document, the organization's functions, policies, decisions, et cetera. I don't know if you as a board of education want to open the door to allow any individual, regardless of where they may be, where they reside or who they are, even if you know who they are, to create a public record in the Norwood City School District. Whether that's something you want to allow to happen. When someone speaks in a, in an open meeting, even if it's recorded, obviously it's recorded, but that doesn't necessarily, only, the only thing that becomes a record is the actual meeting itself and someone can see that that, that was what was said by the person who said it. A email will potentially, because you have to then attach that to the minutes, would become problematic. I also have some concern too about authenticity. I may say I'm Bill Dieters, but I may not be. I may say that my email address is XYZ, but I may not actually, that may not actually be my email address. I could, you know, it's very easy to sort of ghost that process and, you know, do you want to allow people in Anchorage, Alaska to take over your board meetings by sending you emails regarding whatever the latest political issue is that people are concerned about, that they feel like they need to discuss, if you have no idea where those emails are coming from, you don't know who is behind them. You don't know if it's the same person that sent 15 different emails, under different email addresses. So that, that is concerning as well. And then kind of lastly, I don't know where you guys want to be on this, but you know, let's say I decided that one of you board members, I just really had it out for. And then I just wanted to continually pepper the board of education with pretty salacious comments and disparaging comments. Let's say I say this board, this board member is a fraud, this board member is stealing money, this board member is committing felonies, this board member stole XYZ. There's no way that you can prevent what I say, there's no way that you may even know who actually is saying it and from the purpose of, could you sue me later for libel or slander? But that document becomes a public record. So if someone makes a public records request and Bill Dieters is a board member and they say any and all emails received regarding Bill Dieters, and there's 27 emails that are disparaging and that are lies and they're not, and they're not accurate, that all becomes released and it kind of creates that process. So I, I think it's very noble and valid from the board of education's perspective to be transparent. I think giving the public the opportunity to comment and ask questions is obviously vital to the whole process that we're engaged in, the democratic process. I just don't know if, if reading emails into the record is the proper way to do it. I don't, I think if you chose not to read emails into the record, it would not mean that someone could still not voice a concern to the board or to the administration in email. And it does not mean that that still wouldn't be followed up on and investigated, dealt with. It just wouldn't be part of the quote official process of public comment, which would, would, you know, typically in, in the past, from a perspective of a practice, would be when someone comes in front of the board and speaks. There's probably more reasons why I'm concerned about it too, but those are like, kind of like the top six or top five that I kind of wanted to, wanted to, to go over. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. I just, obviously, it's a new, I've been doing this for 28 years. And so obviously, the last year and a half, two years, COVID has created a lot of new issues and a lot of new things, new challenges for us to look at. But in examining this particular one, I think now that you're back to public meetings and public comment, you're probably better off to maintain that the way we did it before. And if you're going to allow emails or maintain an email, like kind of communication address, which is perfectly fine and maybe even a good idea, just not make it quote part of the board meeting itself officially. So, well, that's kind of a long answer to your question, Mary, but hopefully you guys are still there and haven't hung up on me yet.
Everyone is still here.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Well, I guess, I do have concerns with cutting off this vein of communication. We have lots of family members who have little ones at home who really want to attend meetings, who can't, it's dinner time or they're still at work. Allowing emails gave the opportunity to many of our parents who are otherwise occupied during our very limited accessible period of, here's our meeting and this is the only time we're accessible. I understand the concerns, especially with verifying who an email might be from. I don't see an issue with, you know, the email has to arrive by, let's say, 5:45, just like we have a check-in time here. If you're in person, you have to be here at a certain time to sign in. There's a cap on a topic. They are not allowed to use a student's name or start disparaging an employee in front of us. Those things would be cut off immediately. So if we see an email that starts, you know, cussing out or attacking a person on the board or a teacher or a student, we could immediately close off that email, the same way we would shut down a person who is here doing the same type of thing.
Well, you may and you may not be able to though, because from, once you open that up as a First Amendment forum, you can't not, you can't regulate content.
Well, it's part of our, our regulations that the participants agree that if they are to speak in front of the board, they are not to use a student's name or bring up, you know, an issue with, like, like I said, like a staff member, something, personnel complaints. So we are allowed to shut those types of things down because it's already agreed upon, hey, if you're coming in to talk, these are our guidelines. And then if they get to their time limit, same thing could be, if somebody wants to send us an eight-page book, we could easily cut that off. Only a couple of times did we have multiple emails that took up time to read. Every once in a while, we would just get one or two requests. I didn't see it as a hindrance to read a couple emails here and there.
Well, yeah, I, I, I understand what you're saying. My concern, obviously, I'm always looking at the worst-case scenario.
Right.
Right? Like, nobody calls me when everything's wonderful. They like call me when there's problems. I'm just concerned that if someone would decide that they wanted to delude you as a board of education and become sort of like use that as a political vehicle, you've opened yourself up for that, would be my concern.
Right. Well, then, in what way could we as a board continue to create pathways for our families to be able to reach out to us and feel heard when they can't attend a board meeting?
So...
Like, is there a way we could have a, a call in so we could see their face? Like, we have Alice participating on, on the phone on Zoom. Like, is there something that we could do so we could verify that person and have them participate?
Yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, um, you know, just because the meeting has to be in person, doesn't mean that you could not permit people to call in and, and, you know, through a Zoom call or through a Google Meet, participate with board participation. You could certainly still do that if technologically that was, you were capable of doing that.
So we could set it up, you know, let's say like if, if you'd like to participate in today's meeting, our Zoom call link is, you know, this. And during the meeting time, you know, you have to be signed up ahead, but during our meeting, you would call in when we say it's time for public participation. And you would just be in the waiting room until...
Yeah, that's actually a good idea. I kind of even think of that.
Hey, this is rolling right out.
If you wanted to allow people to quote appear before the board of education and not be present, you could certainly allow that to happen. I mean, you know, that's one of the things where COVID has kind of changed the world a little bit, right? Because we all became very, very much more, that fifth, that grammar's correct, or much more...
Tech savvy?
Accepting of computers and Zoom calls and video calls. And, you know, many people like, like my mom and dad who are in their 80s didn't do that at all before and now they're very capable and confident of doing that. So, yeah, I mean, it's something, if you could make that work, that, that would be a wonderful way to do it. It would take care of probably everything on the list that I'm concerned about.
So what, what I see here is, is I don't see us wanting to cut off the avenue of communication through the email. I see the hesitation and, and the not wanting to put yourself in a bad situation by, by reading something that could put yourself into jeopardy.
Right.
Right? So the, the emails could still be there. And if people want to reach out to us and, and still make sure that those things are part of the, the meeting, I mean, that's going to happen, it's just not something that, that we're going to read. You know, the State House does that all the time, is you can send written, you can send written comments into pieces of legislation that's going through the process.
But how often do you feel heard or recognized?
Well, I mean, so it, it doesn't matter. What we have an obligation to do is, is for transparency, is to dictate the, the time and the place of which public comments can be made.
Right.
And now that we're back here conducting business in person, you know, I, I feel as much as possible, we need to revert back to, you know, having people have the ability to come and speak to us.
But we didn't before and people were always asking for new ways to participate and for us to move forward with technology the way we have through COVID.
Yes.
Hello? Okay. I got cut off for a second.
That, I feel like since we have the ability to improve the access for our families, especially those who cannot be here in person, who really want to be here in person, I feel like we do kind of have an obligation.
And just tonight, I had to guide Olivia and Jake up to where you are by phone because they had no idea where this was. And the last time we had parents show up, there was, we had three speakers, there was a fourth speaker that never made it because he couldn't find us. And then the wife told me at a community event, it's like, oh yeah, my husband was there too, but he never made it because he couldn't find you. I'm like, great.
But, but still, we're not, we're not talking about removing the, the, the pathway of communication. So the email is still going to be there. It's just that I think there are some concerns about board members actually reading those things into the meeting.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying, in what way can we make it more accessible? You know, what if you have a disabled parent that maybe they, they aren't able to get here? You still have COVID concerns for some families and they don't want to come to an in-person meeting, but they want to speak. It's not about just sending an email for them, it's wanting to feel heard and recognized and a part of the process. And I think that it's an important thing to realize that we have the technology to support better communication options for our community. And if we can do it safely and, you know, obviously in a way that's not going to put us at risk, and I agree, the email, it's hard to verify if we have to read it into record, but if there's a compromise that we can reach that will allow families to participate from home safely, where we can verify the information coming in, why not pursue looking into that?
Any other questions for Mr. Dieters?
What if we had a non-board member who was designated to read our emails?
I, I, no, I don't like that either.
Again, we're at the same issue of being able to verify.
You know, um, I, you know, I think COVID has made us all look at things a little bit differently, obviously, and it's like kind of changed the paradigms that we all deal with. And like I said, it's created a lot of challenges for us and new, new ways to think about things. If you have typically only had a few of these type of situations happen and you have a board policy that says, you know, you're limited to three minutes, and if you have a board policy that says public participation will be no longer than, you know, 30 minutes or 45 minutes, and you technologically could do it in a way that wouldn't be so cumbersome, you could, you could theoretically, you know, open your, your public comment section up and let's say first you allow those people who are in, in the actual crowd to have their opportunity and then if someone, you could even have maybe a more robust policy for people who need to do it online, but maybe they have to sign up the day before, 24 hours before or something to make sure you get it all working and correct and done. But those people would be subject to the same regulations, whether it would be a time limit or whatever it might be. You might be able to make that work. And that would, that would satisfy the ability for people to be able to make comment for their, for their, their message to be heard in a quote board meeting, other than just receiving an email. But it wouldn't create a record necessarily, a written record, and it wouldn't, you know, we would know who the person was because it would have to be that person. And if you have, let's say you have a rule that says it has to be a Norwood resident, you know, you would be able to verify that as well. So it might be some, that might be a decent compromise that's worth trying. You could always pilot it for a little while and if it's not overly cumbersome and it's not creating a bunch of time and problems, it might be something that might work for you.
Well, I think it's something that we'll definitely have to have a conversation, not only with our IT staff about, but also our community television partner.
Are you, um, are you streaming all of your meetings right now?
Yes.
Yes.
You are being streamed right now, Bill.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I have to be honest with you, like I didn't even think about that as a potential solution until the question was asked. So I, obviously, it would need to be looked into further and it would, you know, do you have the capabilities? I think time is still a potential problem, but if you have a limit of how much time you're going to have for public participation anyway, I don't know if that would become that big of an issue. So I think it's worth looking into.
We could even cap it at number of participants we will accept. You know, four online participants per session or, you know, and that way we have...
I'd be happy to help with Mary and Julie if you wanted us to maybe come up with, you know, some type of written policy for the board to look at to make sure that you could do something that would make it, you know, sort of user-friendly, I guess is the best term I could come up with right now.
That's the idea. We, we just get a lot of requests for communication and ease of access to get to the board. And it seems like we were finally getting more participation during COVID, like you said, than we ever had before. And I would just hate to shut down that momentum if we can find a way to make it happen, that where it keeps, you know, respects both sides of what we need to take care of.
And we did read all those emails, or I did, I don't know about the rest of you, but I read all those emails before.
Yeah.
We read them.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, ultimately, I mean, you don't want your board members to, your board meetings to last till midnight every night. You guys get paid the big bucks, you get paid a lot of money by the hour, I know, right? Not, so, but at the same time, I mean, if you can do it in a way that's not cumbersome, that's relatively efficient in your process, I mean, maybe, maybe it's worth looking at and I'd be happy to, to work with Julie and, and, and Mary to see if there's some way to make that work for you as a board, for you to explore it a little bit further.
I'd appreciate that, Bill. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dieters.
Okay, guys, um, let me know, um, Mary and Julie, just give me a call tomorrow if you want to, I don't, you guys, I'm sure are going to have more discussion about it, but you don't need to keep paying me. So let me know if you need me to do anything.
Thank you.
Okay. Take care, guys.
Bye. Bye.
I, I think there's a lot more to do with that, so...
Well, we can certainly... detailed process than even letting Alice in, you know, where we had a lead letter into the meeting. It'd be something like that, where we had to scan people and get them pre-approved. But Mary and I can work through that, talk to the tech staff, talk to Bill and get some samples together and bring it to you guys.
It'd probably just be a separate computer with a separate Zoom meeting code specifically. And like I said, if, if we need to say, you know, we only will take so many callers during that session.
It would have to be invitationally probably. So you'd have to apply the day before.
Yeah. If I'd like to speak tomorrow, but I have to be at work or, yeah.
No, we can, we could do some scanning and...
And I don't necessarily think that many people will use it, but I think the people who will need it will be very grateful to have it as an option, you know?
COVID has changed a lot of things.
I mean, it's been helpful for us to be able to call into meetings and participate that way. I wish they'd figure out that we could vote that way too again.
I know. That was unfortunate that the...
It's like, yay, we can do it. Now you can't do it somewhere.
That the State House changed that.
We're stuck in the 1950s.
It worked, it worked the whole time.
I'm not sure why there's, why they went backwards on that one.
All right.
Two steps forward.
Alice, do you have anything else?
They'll do whatever they can to get us.
That's right. It's just the man keeping us down.
Yeah. I mean, it says, Braden and I have been to those, been to Globo's and seen them in action.
Yep.
Doing it.
Yep.
Yep.
All right. So I think that's all the items on our agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.